All right. We're good. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May twenty second, two thousand and twenty three Walton City Council Regular Council Meeting. I'll go go ahead and call the meeting to session and we'll order. Sorry, I called it to order and we'll lead start with a Pledge of Allegiance tonight by Council President Pratt.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisibl,
That brings us to announcements and our special guest here tonight introduction of our Police Department Therapy Dog Onyx Chief. Come on up. And Sergeant French now, right?
Correct. Yep, Mr. Mayor Counselor. Good evening. We are very excited to come tonight to introduce the newest member of the Police Department, K nine Onyx. So Onyx is a almost two year old black lab that came to us from Working Dogs Oregon, which is a nonprofit organization out of the Beaverton area that places working dogs with police departments at no cost. We were fortunate this year to make a connection with Working Dogs Oregon at the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police Conference, where we look, we found out that Onyx had become available for a therapy wellness dog for police departments, and we were able to work very speedy and able to secure Onyx that and he became the member of our department late last month, and so we're very excited. His his main goal is to be there for the health and welfare of our officers. So he he has free range of the Police Department on a daily basis to work around and just be with the officers and the staff members that are there at the department if they need. And he is also available and is trained to go out on events and also to incidents if we need just to have the presence of a dog there. There's scientific research that shows the presence of a dog in those situations has a calming effect and a lot of times can can lower barriers and things that we need. So so he's been a great addition and we're super excited to have him. So thank you.
How's your behavior so far?
So far, so good. What you see is what you get. Yeah, yeah. If you have treats, even better.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so he stays with with Sergeant French for the time being, and it'll be a program where certain officers will be able to, you know, have the opportunity to be with him at certain times, but he is available at any time if we were to need to bring him out for whatever that might be. So.
Guess what? It'd be a guest making the rounds at National Night Out.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. He and he's his his dance card is pretty full right now. Everybody wants to see him at their event. So he he was at the Washington County K nine trials over the weekend, last weekend, and was a huge hit. And we were well, it's nice to say that we were one of the envy of the agencies that were out there because we do have this program in place and are moving forward with it. So yeah.
Yeah, I heard a rumor that it might be your birthday today, Chief Pickering.
That is that is correct, counselor. It is my word. Thank you very much.
All right. Any questions for Onyx?
Sonic's like, are you a good boy? Animals come and visit him at the Police Department.
So he's very dog friendly. He's been through the the good citizenship and the good handler training. So he's he is. He's very good with other dogs. And so we, you know, like always, you know, he has, like I said, we has free range of the Police Department. So we try to be very careful on on what he has and what he doesn't have. But but yeah, he's he's very good at playdates, too.
Your sandwiches.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Other questions? All right. Thanks, Chief.
All right. Thank you very much. Yeah, sure.
Freedom.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sergeant French. All right. That brings us to announcement item number two proclamation declaring June two thousand and twenty three as Pride Month in the city of Twalton, and we have Emma Gray and Kelly Horstford. Come on up. Tell us a little about the event that's coming up here.
Did you want to read the proclamation first?
No, we'll hear you first.
Okay. All right. Thank you for having us. Good evening. My name is Kelly Horstford, and this is Emma Gray, and we are two of the organizers for the Twaltons inaugural Pride Stride. Twaltons Pride Stride Celebration will take place on Saturday, June third, at the Twalton Commons. I'm going to talk a little bit about the event, which we're very excited because it will embody the values which I'm sure we're about to hear from the proclamation. The Pride Stride is planned as a family friendly celebration of and for members of the Twalton community who identify as LGBTQIA two S plus, which is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and or questioning, intersex, asexual, two spirit, and allies. Attendees are invited to participate Saturday morning by attending a festive welcome and warm up. We might make you stretch. Don't be surprised. We will have motivational speakers from our own community, pride themed giveaways, face painting, music, a wall of pride participatory art installation, and lots of fun. The stride itself is just an approximately one mile walk that will start and end at the Lake of the Commons near the splash pad. We will follow sidewalks, and we will move from the Twalton Commons up towards Fred Meyer, across onto Worm Springs, and back towards the lake. The route will be accessible for wheelchair and stroller users. Our own Twalton Police Department will have officers on site to make sure we all stay safe while having fun. And I have heard a rumor that if he is available, Onyx will be at the event. The event is free and open to the public and organized by volunteer members of the Twalton community. And if community members would like to make signs for the event, they can join us at our library's Makerspace on Friday, June second, from four to six. We'll have all the supplies and people can craft their sign for the event. So as the city of Twalton continues to elevate and prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion, it would be meaningful to see city leadership attend the celebration. So we hope to see you all there. Cordially invited. That's right. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you, Emma and Kelly. I appreciate your time. Um, the proclamation declaring June two thousand and twenty three to be Pride Month in the city of Twalton. Whereas the city council's two thousand and thirty vision is for Twalton to be an inclusive community that promotes equity, diversity, and access in creating a meaningful quality of life for everyone. And whereas Twalton is a community that includes values and welcomes diversity in our community, including diversity of sexual orientation and identity. And whereas we recognize support and appreciation the invaluable contributions of the members of the LGBTQIA plus community. And whereas the month of June is internationally recognized by the LGBTQIA plus community to commemorate the Stonewall uprising in New York City in response to incessant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas many LGBTQIA plus members continue to face harassment and physical violence, and LGBTQIA plus members are four times more likely to experience violent victimizations than non-community members. Whereas LGBTQIA plus youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to straight cisgender youth. And each episode of LGBTQIA plus victimization, such as physical or verbal harassment or abuse increases the likelihood of self harm behavior by two and a half times on average. And whereas we remain steadfast in our dedication to eliminate the prejudice and discrimination faced by members of the LGBTQIA plus community. And whereas we seek to amplify the voices of LGBTQIA plus community, including youth, allies, and student groups such as the Twalton High School's Gay Straight Alliance and Hazelbrook Middle School's Aqua Club. And whereas we believe that the rich diversity of communities in Twalton is one of the greatest strengths. Now therefore, be it complaint, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Twalton, Oregon, that June two thousand and twenty three is Pride Month in the city of Twalton, the community is encouraged to respect and honor our diverse community, celebrate and build a culture of inclusivity and acceptance.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the City Council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. There's anyone here in the meeting room who would like to address the council. This would be appropriate time, and then I'll do folks who might be in Zoom after that. We have any signups? You don't have to be signed up to speak if you'd like to. Anybody in Zoom? Right? Right. That brings us to the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine. It would be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes of May eighth, two thousand and twenty three. Item number two, consideration of approval of late liquor license renewals for two thousand and twenty three. Item number three, consideration of resolution number five, six, nine, five dash twenty three. Awarding the contract for construction of the Highway ninety nine W, Pony Ridge Neighborhood to one hundred twenty fourth Avenue Project. Item four, consideration of resolution five, six, nine, six dash twenty three. Authorizing the purchase of a right of way and easements for the construction of the Boons Ferry Corridor Phase Two Project. And number five, consideration of resolution number five, six, nine, seven dash twenty three. Authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative improvement agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, otherwise known as ODOT, for the Twalton Sherwood Road, Martin Oszy to I five project. And finally, item number six, consideration of resolution resolution five, six, ninety eight dash twenty three. Awarding the bid for construction of the two thousand and twenty three pavement maintenance program. Would any council like an item removed separately later tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as ready. Any discussion on the motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? It's unanimous. All right. That brings us to public hearings. Item number one, consideration of Norwood Road Plan Text Amendment and Plan Map Amendment. PTA twenty three dash zero, 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 one, and PMA twenty three dash zero, zero, one. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open the hearing for the Plan Text Amendment twenty three dash zero, 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 one, and Plan Map Amendment twenty three dash zero, 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 one. This item is being continued to the June twelfth, two thousand and twenty three City Council Meeting. The public hearing will be held on that night right here in the same room. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the hearing for tonight. That brings us to Special Reports Summer Programs Preview. Julie and Sarah, welcome.
While we're waiting for them to come, I just want to acknowledge our attorney, Chris Cream. Chris, was that was that what we were supposed to do?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for attending.
Ready?
Yes.
I need you here tonight and not in June.
Yeah, we're we're excited to be here. So good evening, Mayor Hubenick, members of council. I'm Julie Ludeman, Recreation Manager, and
Sarah Justidassan, Public Services Manager at the library.
So we're excited to be here for our annual summer programs preview.
And this is the first time we've been upstaged by a dog.
Yes, unfortunately, I don't know that we'll be coming behind your seats for selfies later, although I would be very honored.
Yes, we're available.
Yes, exactly. All right. Okay, so the first thing coming up is the Blender Dash in just under three weeks. So the Blender Dash is our mix up of all the different kind of themed kids runs. So we have color mud, foam, obstacles, and zombies. And we will, we're anticipating between eight hundred and a thousand kids. Right now, we're at about a hundred more registrations than we were last year at this time, but our our max is a thousand. So we're looking forward to that. We also are anticipating about a hundred and fifty volunteers. Volunteers can still sign up on the city's website, twaltonoregon.gov forward slash volunteer. And we're also happy to announce that we work with the school districts and are the family partnership advocates at each of the schools in the Tiger Twalton School District to offer scholarships to students. And so we're working through starting to get all of those scholarship applications in as well. So we're really happy that we're able to do that. And I have the I have the power. I just don't know how to use it. There we go.
So our summer reading program, of course, is coming up and technically starts June first. The there's always a theme for summer reading in this year. It is Find Your Voice. So we have been looking for lots of opportunities for people to find new ways to express themselves. But of course, on the heels of Blender Dash, couldn't help but put a big picture of Bubbles. That's one of our returning programs, Science Spectacular, otherwise known as Science on the Plaza. We started doing that when we really couldn't hold programs inside. We have found that it's a great way to have a good learning lesson and make a good mess at the same time. And our kickoff weekend is the weekend after Blender Dash. More Bubbles. We have the amazing Bubble Man coming. Family favorite as well. And we have a band called The Cabin Project coming on Sunday. The the teens have their own party on the Friday. So we're doing something for all ages that weekend. We waited till school was out to do the kickoff this year, and we're spending a lot of time right now getting ready to get into the schools to let all the students know about summer reading. So some of the other things we have going on, for the first time, we have a Makers in Residence Program. I actually got a little inspired. The New York Public Library has had artists in residence for several years. We're just as cool. We have Gerardo Calderon and Mel de Reyes. They are artists and musicians. They are coming and leading some workshops with us. They have some some projects that they are designing for people to just come into the Makerspace and explore that space and make items to take home. And as musicians, they are closing out our summer towards the end. We have family favorite entertainers coming in on the last Saturdays of each of the months. Also hoping to find people to bring their reading logs back and sign up if they haven't done that yet. And we have a whole series of adult programs as well. We we really leaned into the Find Your Voice. So we we have karaoke happening, but we also have the opposite. We have sound baths, which is an experience to kind of let go of your stress during the summer and have a real chill experience at the library as well.
All right. And the next big special event that we have is Viva Twalton. This will be returning to at Faldy Park on Saturday, July twenty second. The event goes from one until eight P M. And this is a really, it's a multi departmental collaboration. And it's gonna be bigger and better than ever this year where we have way more booths, we have more food, we have more fun. Word has it, the mechanical bull will also be coming back. So that was something from the first year of Viva that is sure to be a hit. So hope to see all of you there. It's Saturday, July twenty second. Summer camp. Summer camp starts the week after two weeks after school gets out. We have a week of staff training when they're not actually in school. So we have um two different programs. We have our younger kids, our first through sixth graders, and then we have our seventh through tenth graders, which we call our teen program. The the kids program goes for eight weeks. We have four hundred and fifty kids enrolled. That's our maximum, and we have five hundred and twenty five on the waitlist. Our teen camp is seven weeks. It's only a three day. It's a three day a week instead of a five day a week. So we're not doing the Fourth of July teen camp week. We've got eighty four teens enrolled in that one. That's also our max and hundred and twenty on the waitlist. I'm also really proud to announce that we have offered seventy scholarships for the summer camps. So that's something that we want to continue to develop that program. And we're really happy about the partnership that we have now with the school districts and their family partnership advocates. That helps a lot to get the word out to the families that need it. So it's gonna be a busy summer. We also have our concerts in the parks. So we have four Friday night concerts. I won't read through all of those, but you can see them. And of course, all of the information is on our website, twaltonoregon.gov. I want to draw your attention to a couple of things. August fourth, we have two performances. So that's a double header. We have an opening band, Tony Smiley. And then Taken by the Sky is the main band, and that's in Community Park. And that will be that's our our big one for the summer. We also have lunchtime concerts. We started those last year at the Lake of the Commons, and it was really fun. So we're we're looking to enhance those and bring those back again. So hopefully, we'll get to see some of you at some of the concerts. It's a lot of fun. It's just the parks in the evenings in the summertime are just beautiful, and we just do such a great representation of of our community. And so those are, of course, also free.
And a lot of what we put on in the library and elsewhere really, really relies on volunteers. We are in the finishing stages of getting our teen and tween volunteers to the library. We started last year with having a younger set of volunteers come in and the older teens sort of mentor them. And for the first time, we are having a teen intern who's going to help lead that program and also has a connected learning project of their own that they will be leading. So we are in the final stages of finding our our successful candidate for that program. That is a grant funded program through the state library. And of course, we could not do Blender Dash without volunteer zombies and many other kinds of volunteers, Viva as well. Okay. And of course, parks will continue with their volunteering programs, the D I Y program, Team Twalton, and all the corporate and group volunteers that come in and keep our parks looking fantastic, especially when they're heavily used during the summer. The Police Department has a, I believe it's a new program for the summer. And actually, I think they've expanded it to six weeks now. It's for, there's a set of weeks dedicated to sixth graders and then for the older kids as well. And there's a variety of community awareness kinds of topics that are going to be led through during those camps. So those are starting up at the end of June and go through the beginning of August.
And I would imagine that Onyx will make an appearance every once in a while as well.
Think so.
Okay, also, we have the Wantita Pole Center, the Twaltons Active Aging Center located in Twalton Community Park. And their programs are just going crazy. They're they're expanding and seeing more participants than ever before. Summer programs for active older adults. They've got fitness, health, and wellness programs, travel and trips. Those have become very, very popular and lots of different enrichment and educational programs. They just finished up Mental Health Wellness Week, which was last week. They had actually, they had another therapy dog at the pole center named Pretzel. It's very cute. You could test your blood pressure before and after spending time with Pretzel. My blood pressure did not change, unfortunately. But they have programming. They've got hikes, they've got yoga, line dancing. There's an emergency preparedness class with our own CERT team. And one that I might be signing up for, the Portland Donut Tour. So lots of different activities, something for everyone. And then finally, we couldn't do everything with, well, we can't do everything. We can do a lot. We can't do it all. So our recreation partners, we have Willowbrook Arts Camp. Willowbrook started in nineteen eighty two at the Sweet House, which is kind of over by the west staff here with twenty kids and ten staff. It's grown just a little bit since then. And so they'll be in Brown's Ferry Park again this summer. We also have Skyhawk Sports Camp. So they do sports camps from soccer, basketball, tennis. And there's about three hundred kids enrolled in that program throughout the course of the summer. We're also welcoming back Skate Like a Girl. It's not just for girls. Actually, it's for any gender, and it's a learn to skate and sort of development, leadership development class that we're really excited to have them back at the skate park in Twalton Community Park. Of course, our twelve new sports leagues are always very active. And the Twalton Historical Society, and you will see me back with them, with Ross Baker and Larry McClure coming up for their annual report. So you'll get to see me again. You won't get to hear me, unfortunately, or fortunately during that time. So again, we just want to say thank you. I I've worked for the city. I think I might be going on fifteen years. I know that seems impossible. But I just want to say thank you. I don't I don't think I've ever been told, no, you can't do that. That's ridiculous. I'd like to think that means that I only present really good ideas, but I think it also shows that the city of Twalton is willing to listen to staff and let us be really creative and do really innovative programs. And, you know, when you say we want to do a parade and everybody can come and join in. Okay, cool. So I just want to say thank you for your leadership and allowing staff to be able to be creative in what we do. And I know the library is the same.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, this means next summer is our tenth presentation together. So we're gonna have to really kick it up.
Okay, maybe we'll bring it. We'll have to bring a cake for everyone.
Yes, so I did bring flyers of just our June programs, and we thought our June was mellow. And I don't know how we're going to fit July into one piece of paper. But I'll
But questions for Julie and Sarah?
And thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it. Um, so there is, there's a lot of kids on the waitlist for summer camps, and I'm sure you've asked yourself this question, but how can we serve more kids for the summer camp? Because clearly, there's a demand for that.
Yeah, there's there's clearly a demand. I think that our waitlist, everything filled up within ten minutes on the day that we opened up registration. There's clearly a demand. We just need more staff to be able to meet that demand. But right now, we're doing good.
And as a follow up question, is that then more seasonal staff?
Yes.
How that that works?
Yes, and probably someone else to help me because I might be a little bit too much for just one full time staff person.
Well, it's also space constraints as well, right? Like the I mean, it's to do it and then to like where.
Yeah, yeah, we actually moved once. Well, when we had our COVID restrictions and we couldn't be inside, we actually moved all the camps outside. So there is still some some capacity there. And we have lots of other parks.
I have one more follow up question. So the the kids that get the opportunity to to go to the summer camp, is it usually kids that are
is it usually kids that are signed up for the whole, all the, uh, the weeks? Or is it like, can you only sign up for one? Like, how does that work? Or is it just however, whatever you can get, you get?
Whatever you get is, whatever you can get is what you can get. Yeah. I think lots of families would like to sign up for everything. Um, it just depends on if it has filled by the time they get there.
The questions. As president.
Oh, I just want to thank you for all these great programs. One, I talk to people from other cities where if they know anything, they know about that little heart thing. They know about our, our lights parade, or they know about the Makerspace. So it's, I mean, I know you do a lot more, but it's great that, um, people really see what we're doing in our little town, doing a lot of great things. Um, and I just wanted to ask, I'm sure, um, you, you said you need volunteers and zombies for, um, Blender Dash. I bet you need some for Viva Twolleton. So would you repeat how people could sign up for?
Yes, thank you for that question. So you can sign up to volunteer at the city's website. It's twoltonoregon.gov/volunteer.
Question. On the summer reading, traditionally, it's also adults too, right?
Absolutely. It's everybody. Um, and everybody gets stickers with their logs. So, which is the best part, really.
I do. It's came with the fact that they had the gift card. It gives her to make it kind of pass on those. All right, any other questions? Thanks for putting a terrific, uh, lineup of programs together for the kids and adults this summer.
Thanks for having us.
Right, that brings us to items removed from consent. We had none. Um, council, uh, communications, any? I was, again, remind folks of the Memorial Day services on Monday, the twenty-ninth, starting around ten forty-five, will be the flyover. Uh, great panel of speakers. And then remember, after the ceremony is over, we get to walk over to the park for a free barbecue, uh, and get to chat with each other and learn about what's going on in the city. Uh, because we're still, most people are coming out of their COVID bubbles, uh, gradually, and it's good to see faces we haven't seen in a while. It's also a chance to, uh, find out and get the history and the stories of the veterans in our, uh, in our city. Uh, they're getting older and older each year as it goes by, and, uh, looking forward to the Veterans Plaza and their input on that, on the construction. Uh, so I'm looking forward to seeing everyone on that Monday. Anything else? Councilbrooks?
Just want to remind people or invite people to take a look around. We have new, um, the Arts Committee also worked on having some new traffic box wraps. So they're located around the city. A lot of them are more playful themes and they're near schools. And, um, so if you're walking around and you see a new traffic box wrap, um, our volunteers worked really hard on that. And, um, and that's another thing that, um, Julie Ludeman's been involved with. Thanks.
Think I mentioned, but who knows? Uh, again, remember the Memorial Day services are at the Commons on the splash pad and that at the cemetery this year. So I have a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I have a motion second to agenda tonight's, motion is second to adjourn tonight's meeting. Any discussion of those motions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Have a good night.